Good evening colleagues and guests. The September 2nd, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education shall come to order. We'll call Rod.
Here.
Jessica.
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Diana?
Here.
And Leah sends her regards this evening. Dr. Salerno, has this meeting been properly noticed and certified?
Yes, it has.
Thank you so much. And Abel, please join me in the collegial allegiance.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic of Oregon's stands, our nation, our government, and to the Lord, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 1B, Jessica, would you please read our mission statement this evening?
Sure. The Mount Borah area school district community partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, challenging challenges, preparing and powering them to be productive, responsible, and self-revealed members of society.
Thank you. Item 2A, approval of the presented revised agenda. Are there any revision requests from the board?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Diana, seconded by Jeff, to approve the agenda as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item 2B, approval of the August 16th, 2021 board meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Diana, to approve the August 16th board meeting minutes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item 3A, school news. Dr. Salerno.
Well, good evening, everyone. Boy, we had a successful launch to the school year. We're already into day three, and I tell you, a lot of hard work went into getting this school year off the ground, not only on the part of our students and our staff, but across our parents. Thank you for everybody who's done such a nice job of helping set the conditions so that we can have a successful school year. A couple of things, you know, in our lead-up to that special day, we have a number of kids who are already in our schools, notching some wins on the courts and in the fields and, you name it. They've been just doing some great things, and I would be remiss had I not said thank you to all of our coaches, because our coaches put a lot of time into their craft. It's a passion of theirs. They truly have a love for not only their sport, but also for the kids that they coach. This Friday night is an example of that. We have a football game, a home football game, and as we all know too well, we're coming up on the 20th anniversary of a very tragic day, September the 11th. In between first and second quarter, we're going to have a special experience to honor our police, our fire, our EMS, our military during the game as a way of saying thank you. I want to congratulate and thank Brett St. Arnold. If you don't know Brett, what? Just a neat young man, great coach, just a great human being, and he thought this would be a nice thing to do, and I couldn't do anything more but support him. So if you happen to get the ballgame on Friday night, please be sure to take note of the special celebration of these fine folks. Speaking of fine folks, we had a couple of individuals who celebrated their 25 years with the Mount Borah area school district. Isn't that fantastic? It was Cammy John, one of our peer professionals, Tom was our buddy, Sigmund, who was one of our counselors, Luanne Spinell, and Nicole Teep, all doing just really a fantastic job in our school district, 25 years strong into our district. And speaking of doing work strongly, I want to congratulate board members Hannah and Sailor. I don't know if you heard the news, they're going to be recognized at a meeting of the WASB. That's going to happen at the Region 12 meeting November 3rd, because they've reached a new level in the number of hours that they've provided in service to either at the WASB level in trainings or committee work, or maybe even at the National School Board level. So congratulations to both of you. You definitely have set the tone, tempo, and pace for the rest of us in terms of continuing our work. And lastly, working the boards back there is one of our very own Megan Van Orstel. Hi, Megan, how are you?
Good.
Oh, thank you, Megan, for coming in early today. She's even helping out Ezra Dennis. Ezra's, I think, at the musical right now, but I want to thank both of you for just doing a great job of setting us up for a great meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Salerno. Do any board members have any other school news to share? I have a short bit, in keeping with our board member liaison policy. I did visit Mrs. Johnson the day before school resumed to her of the ELC and the PC. We did chat about COVID protocols, transportation, and staffing. We did spend a considerable amount of time discussing areas of continued interest to her parents, including breakfast and lunch procedures, recess and outside time, and the ways in which specials are currently running. And I did leave that meeting feeling really good about where we're at, and of course, I expressed the board's best wishes for our future two students and staff. Moving on now then to item 3B, citizens' comments. Dr. Salerno, do we have any registered speakers this evening?
No one has registered as of yet, but certainly we have signed up here.
Great, thank you. We do want for a second citizens' comment portion if you do wish to register before then. Moving on to item 4A, personnel transactions. Dr. Salerno, any remarks?
Just two quick items. First, please allow me to thank Coordinator of Human Resources, Sarah Urthem. Sarah has really just done a remarkable job this entire hiring season, and you can see tonight, not only in her first document, but in addendum as well. You've been a busy lady, and you can see that we've brought on some really remarkable individuals. So thank you to Sarah, and welcome to our new team members.
Thank you. Board members, questions or clarifications on these transactions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Including the addendums?
Yes.
Thank you. That was motion made by Rod, seconded by Jeff, to approve personnel transactions and addendums. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item 5, our consent agenda. Would any board members like to pull out orders A through B to remark individually?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Diana, seconded by Rod, to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Moving on to our discussion items. Item 6A, our customary committee member reports. Although you'll recall, we didn't poll many committee meetings last month to incent focus on some of our broader Board of Education business, I'll still use this time to check in with the committees to see if you have any updates to share. Mr. Hannah, anything to report for building roads and transportation?
Our meeting was canceled.
Thank you. Ms. Yergone, anything for finance?
The finance committee did not meet because there was the annual meeting and budget hearing that took place on August 11th.
Thank you, Jessica, and we will hear from Leah and Sue. Moving on to 6B, right, updates for Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson finds his way up here. I'd like to first thank Brian and his team for really doing a remarkable job tonight as a result of his outstanding efforts. We have three grants, substantial dollars, being brought into our district. How are you doing? How's your writing hand? You okay there?
We're so excited, yeah. So, yeah, so this, we were hoping to have this news at our last staff meeting, but we weren't quite able to share it, but we are tonight, is that we have received word from all three grants, and we have received all three grants. And so all three are really around mental health supports and for students within our district. And so when you really look at the Dane County Mental Health, that's $72,000 for the district, and that's all what we've talked about, right, is moving from a reactive stance to proactive. So it's having our own in-house trainer for mental health first aid, our own in-house trainer for nonviolent crisis intervention, it's social-emotional learning curriculum for our high school, to be able to incorporate in our high school programming, it's continued work on having a sensory room at the intermediate center, and doing a full zones of regulation implementation 4K through 5th grade. So zones of regulation are really being able to identify your emotions, where you're at, being okay with being, having an emotion, but then being able to regulate yourself into different emotions. So if you're red, you're angry, it's okay to be red and be angry, identify it, and then how can we get to a calming space? And so all of that will go towards all of the proactive stances, so I'm super excited about that. The AODA grant gives us $15,000, and then that really is looking at the proactive measures of being able to identify if somebody is using, and then being able to react in a manner that's supportive for the students who may be struggling with AODA issues. So that will be beneficial for sure. And then the latest one that we really just found out was the DPI mental health grant, and that's super exciting for us, because it's 72,000, I believe, over two, for two years, so really about $150,000. And that gives us an additional social worker, and what we've decided to do with that is have that social worker at our middle and high school level, and they will be the district mental health coordinator. So all of these proactive stances and work that we're doing, somebody can kind of have the time to funnel and energize it within a, within a student services role. So super excited about all of those, those grants and the possibilities that come with it.
Also adding a man president, I want to thank Brian and CJ Goodwin. Both of those individuals were instrumental in keeping our Mental Health and Wellness Community Coalition together. Last year, both of them served as co-chairs, and we're excited that once we bring this person on board, they'll help us carry that ball forward. So thank you for the work you've done, really remarkable work over the course of the past 12, 13 months.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any questions for Brian?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Brian.
It was just a discussion item, but I appreciate the enthusiasm. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, now moving on to our action items, beginning with our standing COVID-19 updates. Board members will aim to use this for a Board of Education meeting each month to receive any pertinent district, county, and state updates about the pandemic, and it will be listed as an action item should there be recommendations for alterations that would need our board approval. We will also have a COVID-19 discussion at the second full board meeting of each month, with thanks to board members Hayes and Lipscomb for their advocacy on this front. Of course, we've learned that planning sometimes has to pivot to the new realities of mandates, so thank you for your flexibility as we embark on this work together. Dr. Salerno, we know that both you and Mrs. Johnson have some information to deliver to us this evening.
Yes, how about I turn it over to Sarah, our Director of Instruction. We have been working together as an admin council to develop a response plan to provide instruction in the event that we have a student who must isolate or quarantine as a result of being impacted by the virus. And this was worked in partnership with our colleagues, was it not, our teacher colleagues? I will turn this over to you, Mr. Hannah.
We can pull the mic as well. So we have a document before you, broken up into two pages. The first page focuses on our elementary students, particularly our five pairs through our 5th grade students, and looking at how we can support students who both need to quarantine for potentially a close contact or isolate because they have contracted COVID. So we're looking at our current practices, but in that, we also look at our past practice. In past practice, no matter if a student was ill or out of vacation or whatnot, we always made sure that materials were provided in the school office. So families will still pick up those materials for the students if they miss school. We also make sure that we have independent practice as well, the Dreambox, Webraz Kids, Mr. Doug, all these online applications that students can access through their cover pages, but then also last year we implemented CSO, having those activities online as needed. So we're treating those quarantine or those isolation periods, those shorter periods like a difficult illness where the family would pick up the materials. But let's say a student would have to be out for five or more days, more than five days. In that, then, we are going to be looking at live streaming those students or that student into the classroom for some of the core content areas, some app that are seen and then are reviewed. It would be an all-day stream into the classroom, because that could be interesting for the class and the teachers, having an in-and-out of students potentially live streaming, and that could impact what happens in the classroom for learning activities. We have done some technology tools that are listed and some reminders, not only for staff, but for families as well, how to log into Quiver, how to access this and that that we have in this document. We also look at an elementary level of teachers setting up periodic meetings, one-to-one or small group with students, not necessarily to teach them the curriculum, but to check in, answer questions, maybe provide a little course to some of the work that is being sent home to the student as well. So that's for the elementary level. The secondary level, then, grades 6 through 12, again, that past practice of making sure work is available within the school office for the family to pick up, but we're also emphasizing Google Classroom more. And teachers are expected to use Google Classroom to present their notes, present assignments, present work. So all that information will be in Google Classroom, regardless if the student is quarantined or isolating or in the classroom with their peers. We'll also be mentioning to staff and advocating for potentially recap videos. Teachers last year would create short, two, three, or five-minute lesson recap videos, providing that specific instruction on the skill that they can utilize from last year, or they can create those as well and upload that into Google Classroom. So whether you're in the classroom and you forgot how to do a concept, you can go into Google Classroom at night to do that, or if the student was out due to quarantine or isolation, they can also have that, access to those videos. But we will not, we will not be live streaming into the middle school or high school classrooms, even if it is more than those five consecutive days. Students will be able to access readings, work, all those things within Google Classroom. Teachers could, however, set up a Google Meet to check in with those students, just like we offered at the elementary level, to check in, to make sure everything is, that the students are up to speed, they understand the work that they need to get done within Google Classroom. From, and Brian, you kept it wrong, but from my understanding, if a student would have to quarantine due to being a close contact, they would be up to potentially seven days out, but that would include maybe a weekend and other pieces. So the student would be out maybe most five days, which if a student was out for flu or other sickness in past years, is something that we would handle with Google Classroom or send them home as well. So we're looking for an consistent model, not as much in-and-out, in-and-out, in-and-out live streaming, because that will impact not only what happens in the classroom, but how that teacher works within the classroom as well.
Thank you, Sarah, for leading our administrative team through this discussion, and our administrative team paid extra special attention to checking in with our teachers to make certain that this is a balance that can be made within the school day, as it will require some additional work on their part. But we felt as though that concurrent teaching continues to be something, given the numbers of students has been very low, touch wood, continues to be the case. Sarah, you didn't mention, but maybe can I put you on the spot, how many families do we now currently have doing concurrent teaching? I think it's three families with five people total, but I might be wrong about that.
Yeah, at the primary centers, we have one student, the whole primary center. At 4th grade, we have, I believe, one or two students. At 5th grade, we have lots of students. So for the whole elementary, students taking virtual due to health needs is about five.
We believe, as evidenced by the data that we shared with the board at a recent meeting, kids learn best when they're in school. And we're finding that now that people kind of got those first couple of days of nervousness out of their systems a little bit, we're seeing that we're finding our procedures and routines, we're finding that groove. We also are looking at the data, and for those who are in the audience tonight, listening or watching this in a video later, you can see under this agenda item some additional data. This came from a phone call on the notes I took on Thursday of last week. I read in the paper this morning, there'd been a slight uptick in about 2/10 of a percent in terms of the number of people who've been vaccinated in Dane County over the weekend, and so you can make your own decisions in terms of what this data means for us. We do know that we have a public health Madison Dane County order to wear these masks through the 16th of September, and I'm asking for the board to please consider action tonight that would guide the administration in terms of that mask order ending on the 16th and the board having a meeting on the 20th. Rather than have a lapse of a couple of days in the event that, in the event that PHMDC does not extend their order, that we would at least have that order through at least Wednesday, the 22nd of September. I think the chances of PHMDC revoking this mask mandate are slim. However, I just don't want the district to be at an impasse in the middle of a week on this matter, and want to set the board up for success when they meet on the evening of the 20th. I'll come back to that question and answer on that piece here in a moment, but maybe a couple of other items if you don't mind, too. I must state publicly, I made a mistake. I had indicated to our public that we had on hand enough rapid tests in our district to begin administering those. And my fault, my fault alone, I was incorrect in that. We have rapid tests that ended up expiring, and as a result, we have been asking families who felt like they had been ill to work with our partner sites to receive that. In an effort to hopefully get beyond that, first allow me to apologize, because I pride myself in my word, and clearly I just misunderstood, and I clearly miscommunicated. So I want to extend apology not only to the board, but those listening in to this, this comment. I understand the speed of trust. Want to thank CJ Goodwin, who found a partner in a group called ACL, Accelerated, get the Brian, can I get an assist from you? Oh, Accelerated ACL?
Accelerated Analytical.
Accelerated Analytical, an outfit out of the east side of the state, is willing to come in and conduct testing for any student or parent or staff member two days a week. And that would happen in a drive-through format on Mondays and Thursday mornings, likely from 8:30 in the morning till about noon. And we would do that over here at the middle school and right outside the tech ed doors, door number two. People could just drive through and they could get that test. We will put information about this option out to our families with the board recap. Our target date is the 13th, this upcoming Monday, to start. If it's not then, then we definitely hope that it would be on the 16th, I believe would be the Thursday. So we're very pleased about this option. It costs nothing to families, costs nothing to participants, and this group has been well lauded around the state for their work that they've done with other school districts. On the note of, of teacher vaccination, I think some of us have been reading in the paper that some districts are at least eyeing teacher vaccinations as a requirement. I thought maybe it would be helpful to provide some data to demonstrate that our staff has been very responsive to the call for vaccination. You might remember we had an opt-out program for them as well, an adestation process like we do for our students. And we had 238 people thus far who completed that adestation, and every one of those individuals, to my understanding, as of today, has, has received the vaccination. So we've really seen some great, great results coming from that. So at this time, I'm not recommending that we look to require staff, because we've had said voluntary compliance at this point. We do want to continue to work with staff members who haven't responded yet to that adestation. Remember, we put that in place because we didn't have a mask mandate. But to that point, if and when that mask mandate does fall to the wayside, those individuals who not completed that adestation or have not been vaccinated would be required to maintain their, their mask, should that be the direction the board falls back to, which was their original plan. And then lastly, I do owe a note of gratitude to our school nurses. Boy, have we got some gems in both CJ Goodwin and Kristy Stotts. Kristy is our newest school nurse, and both of them have really been pouring on the hours. And I think it could really be more difficult for them at this point if we didn't have the mask mandate, quite frankly, because of the requirements that we have around contact tracing. Knowing that people are having the masking and required to have masking, the work of our school nurses around the state who don't have the mandatory masking has expanded exponentially. And so whether we agree or disagree with the masks, because the rules that have been established and are in place, it really has made their work focusing on getting individual health plans in place for the start of the school year, rather than trying to piece together a lot of, a lot of difficult conversations about who's been with who and for how long. I want to, want to really thank our, our school, our school health services team, led up by Brian and his team. I'm pleased to answer any questions you might have with me at this point.
Steve, I'd asked you on the phone, but I think it'd be nice for the full board to hear, how we track attendance for students who are in quarantine.
Yes, yeah, we talked about that, didn't we? And we mark it as an absence, as a parent absence, or if it becomes necessary, even a medical absence, but we do not mark it as a COVID-related absence, because we don't do that for other absences that we have for school, why a child might be sick. We don't mark it as flu, we don't mark it as something different, broken arm, we just mark it as absent. However, we do have a separate system that's in place that will be our COVID dashboard, and that dashboard will launch, I know we are shooting for next Tuesday, the 14th, but I saw you do some work this afternoon on that, didn't I, Sarah? And so that'll be ready to be launched as soon as tomorrow, so about a week early on that, and that will be on our district's website.
Is there other questions for Steve? So Steve, you are asking of us our consideration to approve, to my understanding, of September 23rd, Green State Board's previously approved COVID protocols, keeping with your suggestion?
Yes, please. We're asking if the board would consider directing the administration to continue implementation of the mandate, mask mandate, through September the 22nd. It's a Wednesday. The reason for this is because we don't know what public health medicine is going to do. You remember when we met two weeks ago, we had a lot of people get some insights and share their perspectives, and wouldn't you know, the next day, the mask mandate came out. Well, that solved that issue, but we don't know what they're going to do now, and it takes a lot of work to pivot back and forth between masking and not masking. And so we know that if public health medicine does not extend the mask mandate when it expires on the 16th of September, the Board of Education has a meeting on the night of the 20th. Rather than just end the mask mandate right away, cause some confusion, we're asking for some grace time through at least the 22nd, and if the board elects on the 20th, they have the authority to do that on the 20th, to take away the mask, mask requirement, then certainly we want to be responsive to that, instead of flip-flopping back and forth. Continuity is so important for people right now with information continually evolving.
Thank you. So I will undertake a motion to approve a mask mandate through end of day September 22nd.
Soon.
Jessica made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Diana, to approve a mask mandate through end of day September 22nd. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
No.
Is that one nay? Motion carries, thank you. Is there any other business of the board for item 7A? Moving on to our policy work, a reminder that first readings can only be passed with full board membership present, so these will be discussions. 7B, Ray Johnson, policy 431, compulsory school attendance.
So this policy, and really it kind of goes into 431.1, too, because it's the combining of those two policies. So kind of the removal of 431.1 and then updating 431. This was really a group project that I would say was heavily involved with Talisa Corcoran, our assistant principal at the high school, and Melissa Hanson, middle school principal. They're kind of boots on the ground, doing the attendance and policy. They're kind of boots on the ground, doing the attendance and policy enactment within their buildings for students. And so they really looked through these policies, we did this part of it together, and tried to pull out, because if you really looked at the red line version, we took out almost all of it. And the reason was because that was really, that's really administrative regulations, it's how we're enacting the policy, right? What are we doing to make sure that we're enforcing the policy? And then we took WASB's recommendation and really just made the policy pretty simple about what it is that we mandate policy, what that age group entails, and that's how we made the decision to go with that route.
Thank you. Questions for Brian? Brian, do we also need a sentence for children who are more than 4K, see that we explicitly list five-year-old kindergarten to be in 4K at the age?
So 4K wouldn't be mandated under compulsory attendance, and so we don't really, to my knowledge, would, we wouldn't have the letter of the law to be able to enforce that or follow it.
Thank you. Further questions for Brian? All right, let's move on to 7C then, Brian, 431.1, school attendance enforcement.
Yeah, so then that's removing that policy. So we combined, we combined that policy, and we're able to take kind of the core components of that, move it up to 431. We get to remove one policy, make it just into one.
Are any additional questions for our members? All right, Brian, let's take it to 447.1, use of physical force, corporal punishment, restraint, and seclusionary time.
Yeah, so this one, the law changed. So all of the laws that were in there were rekindled, switched out. And so the red line version really took out the Wisconsin policy number, because that was kind of heavily enforced beforehand, and that was Act 125. And then that was all removed. We put in the new laws that kind of passed, and then a lot of it will also become administrative regs. But the Wisconsin statute combined last spring. It did become essential for us, because we weren't really doing seclusionary strength, so we brought it, we worked on it over the summer to bring to the board this fall.
Thank you. Questions for Brian here? All right, we'll take action at these other next meeting. Thank you Brian.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 8, our second opportunity for citizens' comments this evening. Are there any new signups? Okay, hearing none, thank you. Item 9, our future agenda items are presented. Would anyone like to make an agenda request at this time? Hearing none. Item 10, our scheduled next meeting is also presented. Dr. Soler, anything you've noted here?
If you don't mind me just mentioning that there will be a joint SOC and Wellness Community Meeting and Education Committee meeting on Wednesday night, September the 29th at 5:30 PM. There we'll talk a lot about the work that's being done around our equity efforts, as well as look over some data that we think is really important for the board to see.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, a closed session, publicly to close session for section 19.85, paragraph 1, sub-paragraph C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Will entertain a motion to move to closed?
Second.
Motion made by Diana, seconded by Jessica, to move to closed session. Roll call, Rod?
Aye.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Diana?
Yep.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I M E S, would take about five minutes, and would you like to resume here?